All right, folks, we're going to call the meeting to order. Our chairman, vice chairman, and secretary aren't here tonight, so we're going to get my just run of the meeting. First order of business, we have his minutes. I'll ask the members to take a look and if prepared to entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of January 17, 2023 meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
New business, we do have a couple plats that are before the presentation of the zoning ordinance. We have a couple plats before us. These are typical lot splits or lots additions that is regular business for our planning commission. The first one is for 25 homes. The planning commission members have that diagram in front of them. The proposal is for a flag lot to be put behind the existing house. The issue we usually run into that a lot of times prevents this lot split from happening is lot width. And this lot had plenty of width for the ability to create a 25-foot stem to go behind the, we looked at the regulations for size and scope. The only thing, the only comment I would make would be to recommend approval based on removal of the garage. They certainly propose to move that garage or remove the garage as part of this project. But I would recommend before formal plating that we require the removal of the garage. I'd hate to see that they can get a process started and/or before permit issued. I'd rather actually see it before before plating, before formal plating, in my opinion, just so it's not there and potentially resold with some...
I drove by about an hour ago and the garage is still there. We can't create a non-performing lot, which we would do if we approved the lot that lot line goes through the garage. So yeah, I believe you have to get rid of the garage before we can technically...
Or if you wanted to make it a condition, I can assure that we don't pass the paperwork back to them until that is is dimmed.
I looked at everything else and all okay. Yeah, I had that same concern.
I would move if they approved the plat for 25 Homes Avenue conditioned upon the removal of the garage that's crossing the property line there.
Is that 25 homes? I know the owners, that's their address, but I thought those were odd numbers.
They are odd numbers, and we will have to create a new numbering system there for that new lot. I believe it is 25. That's on the application.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? The next one is, we kind of didn't get all the complete information as far as the legal descriptions and whatnot. We do have Mr. Call here that may want to speak on this lot split. Essentially, we just kind of wanted to bring it, we were anticipating getting a little more information, wanted to bring it before you and at least get your blessing or show you what we've got. If you'll remember on Chesapeake, there was, the left portion of this where the two flag stems meet Chesapeake, these, this was a lot that the planning commission approved a year or two ago. They're actually going to cut that lot up and there's a larger lot behind, the larger rectangular area is one lot currently. And essentially, they want to use that lot adjacent to Chesapeake to to create the stems and go up and access to what would now be two lots up behind the house that's sitting down there of Joyce Scott that you see noted there. We did look at, the biggest issue here was the length of the flag stem that we looked at. It's relatively close to the 250-foot maximum length, but they did achieve that. And I think it's to also take a piece of that upper lot and add it to the lower lot in front. You'll see that small rectangular addition to that lower lot. So it does meet all the criteria we looked at. We had the surveyor look at, you know, lot splits since 1966, which is one of our criteria. There wasn't, this was a single lot in and of itself. And once again, seems to meet lot area and whatnot. So I don't know, Mr. Call, if you have anything to add or if you'd like to add anything. I think the issue was, typically, we see a legal description to finalize this, and I think you were looking for kind of a blessing or approval, which we kind of did as a staff. We kind of put our blessing on it. But I didn't know if you had any additional comment that you'd like to...
I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody might have. Effectively, I have a timeline problem with the two parcels. I've got an option on each parcel. And the survey crew at Civil and Cardinal has been backed up, so that's why we don't have the legal descriptions and they haven't been able to do the field work. So my hope was through going through this process without having all the boilerplate stuff completed, we could have like a kind of approval, but I'll submit all the requisite paperwork, legal descriptions, and the more full plat. Hopefully, next month, maybe, maybe April, it's all based on some surveying time, so...
One additional note that I wanted to bring up, there is on the right side of this parcel a 20-foot wide private lane. This this issue came up a couple years ago, actually, when Jan was still our city attorney, and she, we had determined that that could not be used for an improvement. It was an existing private lane that if there's an existing plat or platted lot on it, it could be used, but since it didn't meet our regulation as far as width and size, to create a new lot or divide additional lots, it could not be used as the right of way. So that's why they're coming off of Chesapeake. That's one reason they're coming off of Chesapeake.
Yeah, so all the lots back in this area on Orchard Lane are all basically land lots. They don't have any road frontage that would be required today. So this lot is one of those. It just happened to be a vacant lot. All the houses up there that are but on Orchard Lane, which is a private lane, don't have legal 25-foot frontage that we now have to have. So this was done probably, I don't know, 50, 40. So these, this lot that I optioned, I brought before the commission four or five, or five or six years ago, and it was determined at that time we could not subdivide because there was no way to get too legal a frontage. Fast forward today, I put together the lot that's below now that allows 25-foot access.
Kevin, how did you measure the lot width and length of such an irregularly shaped block?
So...
This weird practice I always look at.
Right. The issue was, and why it's odd shape was, by the language, you had to have 250 foot to the setback for which a house could be built. So that's why that that line isn't, the divides lot is not perfectly kind of a diagonal line. It essentially, at that point where it comes up to what would be the minimum setback, that is the lot width of 65 feet. So it doesn't, there isn't kind of a defined line at the end of the flag. It is actually up a little bit to where the setback in the houses. And that was measured, and that's why it's like that, that little jog in there.
I thought it might have a practical reason or something.
Well, it does.
But I don't think we can legally approve anything until we have a full plat, but if this meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance, then I don't think we can turn it down.
Right. That's kind of all I was looking for. I didn't want to close on the property with that house. At least there you had for a moment.
In Kevin's opinion, it beats the requirement for the zoning, then. I don't see that there would be a problem to get your permission maybe.
Okay. Any other questions?
I think that's all we need. We'll look for some more information and you tell them next time.
Okay. Thank you all.
All right. So now we'll get into the continued business. We did have a couple of elements from last month that we didn't quite get to. I think, were we going to start there, Alisa? Okay, we're going to start with a couple elements. Couple things, we just asked that the discussion remain with our planning commission. There will be a time where Alisa will reach out for questions. We ask you to keep that to five minutes or less. If you would also, when you come up, if you could sign your name and put your address on there, we'd appreciate that. And then we'd also like you to stay on topic. So if we're not discussing it tonight, you'll have other opportunities, but if it's not part of what we're specifically talking about, save your thoughts, write them down, email us, hold it for the next meeting, but we're discussing the issues at hand tonight. So I'll ask Alisa to start, and we'll get underway.
Good evening. So as usual, if you can't hear me, just sort of wave.
I want to wave that just now.
Are we doing okay so far in terms of volume?
So far.
Okay. So we tried, maybe others, we tried to rearrange the setup up here so that I was speaking directly to you. So hopefully that will help. So good evening, I am Alisa Duffy Rogers with CT Consultants. With me this evening is Frank Tweedy, who's also in CT, and thank you so much for having us here this evening. Tonight, we will briefly begin and review the zoning ordinance update process, finish the review of the draft zoning districts, begin discussing the administrative procedures, and end with next steps. And as Kevin said, I will stop several times during this presentation to answer questions from community members. The zoning ordinance update is progressing in roughly four phases. The first phase includes an analysis of the existing built environments in Fort Thomas as well as your existing ordinances for subdivisioning zoning. At the end of that process, we produce a diagnostic report of our findings, recommendations, which is available on the CD's website. And in phase two, that includes the process of creating revised regulations, and that's the phase, the process that we're currently in. And major changes from your existing standards are fleshed out in phase two. In phase three, we will complete all the amendments, align the zoning map with the zoning district, and then phase four includes the adoption of the addition of the new zoning ordinance. We are adding some additional opportunities for community members to discuss the proposed changes and getting asked questions. On the Thursday following the planning commission meeting, we're holding what we call the office hours at Fort Thomas Coffee, and so tomorrow from 10:00 to 11:45, and from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Please feel free to drop in during, it is completely a drop-in, just drop in, ask questions during those hours. At the planning commission the following month, I will report out to the planning commission the concerns and questions that community members expressed during the office hours. So I'll take this time right now to talk about what we heard last week, or last month. At the public session, we had five community members, and we discussed some of the difficulties in interpreting the current zoning map, the neighborhood commercial office district, which we're talking a little bit about on the day, the vision for downtown, historic districts in Fort Thomas, neighborhood commercial uses and blockability, and then the challenging faces some community members attending the planning commission meetings. So address a couple of those concerns, you will notice that one of the issues was that the zoning map has abbreviations on it and no names. So we added that to that map over there, and we'll begin a new conflict that soon. In addition to that, we produced a memo that was also on the CD's website that talks about what the commission will be talking about. So giving you a preview of a presentation ahead of the meeting. So those are the two of the things that we did to address some of the concerns that might hurt. Moving forward, we'll be working with these provincial districts that you see on the screen, and we will talk about the ones that you currently see in brown. In addition to that, tonight, we'll be talking about those. There will be some refinements to the central business district discussed next month, as well as some additional overlay districts. And then, as we discussed last month, the foundation for our provincial zoning districts is land use. Therefore, careful consideration is to be given to all the uses permitted within the zoning district, as to whether they are classified as permitted by right, restricted, or conditional. So as we go through these districts tonight, you will notice that I will be asking some questions about use. So please keep in mind that part of what defines these districts are those uses. So let's start tonight's discussion with the conservation and the river preservation districts. The river preservation district runs along the river, along Mary Ingalls Highway, and then the conservation district is currently, we have one parcel zone, conservation district, is located just south of Wardle Works Road and seems to be the open space for the adjacent multifamily district. We are proposing to retain most of the land uses, but we did differentiate between the two districts a little bit more than is currently the situation, with more recreational uses permitted in the river preservation district. Currently, campground or RV vehicle parts are not expressly permitted in the RP district, even though one RV part currently exists. So our first question for consideration is, should camping or RV facilities be permitted in the RP district? And if so, by right, restricted, or conditional? So that's the first question I will open up to the commission.
I think part of the study that we did with the community a couple years back was putting up that district to clamping and that certain, so I think that's in line with the plan that we did. Just throwing that out there, I think that's something the community about, it was a good idea.
Yeah, the word clamping has actually been a component of the plan.
I don't know if this makes a difference. That was, a lot of those opportunities and a lot of the riverfront is city of Fort Thomas property, which we're somewhat exempt from zoning regulations. So I don't, I think maybe outside of the city property, do we want to consider any additional restrictions on other properties that are down there? I don't know, Alisa, if you have any comment on that? Should we look at that a different way or not? Do we want more of what is down there privately? And I don't know yes or no, I'm just posing the question.
So what is drafted before you is additional districts for additional analysis for community centers and cultural institutions. Those are permitted by right for having the campground of recreational facilities as a conditional use. We actually added open space and common open spaces of permitted use, and then left in place as conditional uses, you know, pleasure boat harbors, public lot loading and unloading launches and facilities, recreational dockage, riding academies, assemblies, and those sorts of things within the river preservation district. Currently, all of those uses are also permitted with, excuse me, within the conservation district. It really makes some sense to continue to have those in the conservation district. So we have been refined specifically to be in the river preservation district.
Part notes, most of those in the flood plain?
Yes.
So we really can't build much in the way of community centers and main buildings in those.
Probably not. But it is land that's owned by Fort Thomas. It is land that you may want to do something like that on that is more community minded.
I mean, you can't build, but it's usually prohibited in those spaces.
Yeah. And you got to go up. But certainly things like open space, campgrounds, boat harbors, docked facilities, all of those could be built.
See why we wouldn't just have it permitted because they're probably, they could build any now.
Having what permitted specifically?
The county facilities institution section.
Yeah, exactly. So they're permitted uses as it's currently drafted. The only exception being the utility substation.
So can you kind of restate the question again?
So the question is, I mean, the only thing that's specifically a new use would be those camping and RV facilities, and allowing those as conditional uses within the RP, based on the fact that it was in the conference of plan and one exists today. Any concerns about doing that as a conditional use? We retain the existing development standards for both the preservation and the conservation district. We didn't include parking area setbacks to mandate how far parking areas must be for streets and residential districts. And you will notice that when you through this, if it is bolded and underlined on the screen, that means it's a change from current standards. If it's, you know, without bolding, without underline, those were existing standards. So let's move on to the RP.
Can I ask a question? Wasn't there a preservation district right when that...
Well, we prefer it to be when when we finish each section, if you could hold off, please. It just, it'll streamline our process of getting through each section. Thank you.
So let's move on to the multifamily districts. The R3 and the R5 are existing multifamily districts and include parcels with older multifamily buildings, some of which you even have out here, and new developments located around the city. We retain most of the uses currently permitted in the R3 and the R5. Right now, parking lots and parking garages or parking structures are lumped in together as conditional accessory uses. It would seem to make sense to make parking areas as an accessory use with parking structures as a conditional use. What do you think? So that's the first question. And the second is, currently, funeral homes are a conditional use, and we have no issue continuing to have those as conditional. But since this was originally drafted, many funeral homes now have cremation facilities, and we think we should expressly prohibit funeral homes with cremation facilities in these districts. So two questions. How do we handle parking, parking structures in particular, and funeral homes?
Where would the funeral homes with cremation facilities be located that would be, if we take them out here as conditional use, where could they locate?
I would suggest that you, because of, and see, again, keep in mind that we think about this as location specific. So think about where all your R3 and all your R5 are. They are predominantly surrounded by other residential uses. So I think it's more appropriate to have them, for example, along Alexander Pike and those types of places, as opposed to in the middle of a residential area.
That makes sense. What about in the center of town? I know we've got funeral homes there existing right outside of the commercial area.
Could you turn the mic on, please? Thanks. Or talk into the mic or bring it closer?
We have existing funeral homes, I guess, along North Fort Thomas and the central business district, or right outside of that. Would those be allowed to, what you're proposing, mark are those prohibited then from the cremation facilities there?
So we have not specifically discussed all the uses for the central business district, and that'll probably come back not in March, but in April. So we could have a discussion then about whether or not you want for that cremation at the ones that are downtown.
I did personally, as a zoning administrator, did get a request a couple years ago about this type of facility, and they didn't push hard at one of the churches, a very small-scale cremation facility. Is that something that could or should be incorporated into our conditional use, the churches, which are conditional uses, into that, into, at a church, for a small scale or some scale of that?
Is a cremation, cremation facility, is that where a body is cremated?
Physically, okay, not stored, not...
Right. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that church was for like a place of burial.
A columbari.
Exactly.
Okay. So I might be mistaken, the actual process versus a monument where ashes could be stored?
Right. So it would be unusual for a church to actually have a facility to burn, to find. It would not be unusual for a church to add a cemetery, a columbari, which is where ashes are stored.
Okay. Sorry.
Oh, no, but actually, it's a good point, because we should define, we tend to forget sometimes about that, so we should make sure that columbari is a permitted use. All right. So any concerns about my suggestion of making parking lots, accessory uses, and parking structures conditional uses? And okay with funeral homes being a conditional, remaining a conditional use without cremation?
I knew I had a question. You showed school buildings as conditional, and I thought they were exempt from something altogether, under two...
Yeah, under two...
...ages. I thought they were more or less exempt from zoning as our, God, our options.
If I remember my KLS one, particularly, school districts are not exempt, and certainly private ones are not, but I can look for sure.
I think the school, we've had this question before, and I think the public school districts are exempt to an extent, and they usually have the courtesy to come to this board, show us their plan, but they are somewhat exempt. But the parochial schools, which we obviously have in the city as well, would not...
I think what happened a couple years ago, we had all public schools putting up the electronic signs, and it didn't seem fair to not allow the parochial school to have that also. And I think that's what we're talking about. They've shown us conditional uses there, and that's in the ordinance now, and I thought they were...
And it is currently in the ordinance. Yeah. But I'll check to make sure, and that's why there's no changes listed there, right? You see, it has a P currently, and then a C as proposed. The P is actually conditional. I mean, there are set standards that have to be met under your current ordinance. So making it conditional is really maintaining what you currently have, just as written right now. But I will check. We retain the existing development standards, but simplify the density calculations in the R3 and the R5. A one question I wanted to ask you is, do you see any intensification of development on your R3 and your R3 five sides? And if so, we need to think a little bit more about tailoring some of these developments numbers. I don't see a whole lot of intensification happening on your R3 and your R5 parcels, but I'm going to ask you if you see that happen. Your R3 is predominantly the smaller multifamilies that you see along Fort Thomas Avenue, and there's, I can see right out there, they tend to be between four and eight dwelling units.
I think we got to make a plan to build up the need for development.
Well, it's not necessarily building it. It's taking intensification of existing sites, and most of them are R5 today, and they are newer developments where they have, you know, some land left. I still, because I looked at the constraints of that land, I don't see them being intensified in great, in great way. So I did not see the need to start messing with your setbacks. But I will ask you that question before I make that final decision. And this does not have to be a final decision tonight. If you want to take some time and look at the zoning map and look at the R3 and the R5, I would ask you to do so. But that's the rationale of why I have not done anything clever or more definitive to change any of these. The thing that you will notice is that there are the parking setbacks, even though that have avenues and others for places we can park. Your R3 are a lot of the small lots, and if we start adding parking lot setbacks to them, we're going to add non-conformity to them. So that, you know, so if you think it's necessary, but you're receiving more complaints, or you have a lot of concerns, and you want to deal with those, all street parking lots from some of those small R3, now's the time to do that, but you probably are going to run into some non-conformity if you do that.
I guess would it prevent someone from putting a parking lot in front of their existing apartment building? I can't, I'm not sure of the regulation off the top of my head as far as what they've as far as what the setbacks might currently be, but by creating additional setbacks, could we prevent somebody from putting something that really doesn't belong in their, in existence now?
So you added a look at, you asked a little question. There's nothing currently in your ordinance that would prohibit someone from taking some of these R3s and putting a parking lot in front of it. I think it's probably worth, because we've seen a little bit of improvements to some of your R3 like that. So it's probably worth putting in here where parking shouldn't be located, especially on those R3s. Because think about, again, we're talking about that zoning districts create place. And think about what would happen to however creating a place if the R3s that are out here suddenly have parking lots in front of them. That's going to give you a very different sense of character along Fort Thomas Avenue, whether it's here or adjacent to Central Business District. So let's do that.
Yeah, I think with the, like, like you said, with the amount of improvements that are going on, it seemed to be going on with some of our R3s, I think that, that is certainly the, there's the potential there that someone could, as part of their improvement, want to stick a parking lot in a front yard and if we can in some way prohibit that, I think would be beneficial.
All right. So you bring us back to the next phase. I'll propose some language and then we'll go from there. All right. So we spent a fair amount of time at our meeting last month talking about contextual residential standards for single-family homes. You currently have some single-family detached dwellings that are zoned to R3 as permitted uses. So the question to you is, for the residential contextual standards that we discussed last month, which if you recall, they regulate what, loading garages and building orientation, do you also want to oppose the contextual standards for the only just the single-family homes that are currently located in an R3?
It doesn't seem to make sense to hold it to a higher standard than the multi-family buildings in the same area.
There aren't many of them.
No, it's probably something that never happened.
And, and, and let's just say the worst does happen. It's dilapidated, someone tears it down and they put a big three-car garage facing the street. That's the worst case. At least it's not going to do an entire street of homes with a car garage facing the street. I can go either way, you know, thinking if you want to hold all single-family to the whole in the same standard, I can get there. If you feel like perhaps given the fewer, the few number of them and in fact that they're dispersed along these streets, if you don't want to do that, that's fine too. But I felt I'd introduce the question. You want to put in a parking lot and come back?
Those measures generally have a little bit of effect.
They do.
Again, I want to see why we should hold a single-family on a higher standard than or...
Okay. So right now, we put it as known. Is that okay? Okay. We want to change our mind, we can. So I'm going to stop here and ask for community comments and questions.
I got a question for you.
Once again, we'd like to keep it with these two topics, the river preservation zone, multifamily residential district. If you have questions regarding specifically river preservation zone, multifamily residential districts, that's kind of what we're zeroing on at this time.
Yeah.
Then come up, please come up.
Oh, this is, I thought this was just a question. Go ahead.
Peggy, as you, 37th Sashall Lane. Alicia, you mentioned at the beginning of your presentation here that there were questions at the, maybe the break last month about historical preservation and about what's going to happen to the CBD. But you haven't discussed that here with this group, so I think we'll be doing that tonight.
No, ma'am, we'll have a discussion of historic districts probably next month.
Okay.
And what was your second question?
Well, I just want to correct you to that point. As, as you all may or may not know, I know there's some questions last month about historic districts and there is importments here in Fort Thomas that the CBD is both midway as well as uptown protected historic districts. There's regulations on point for the order design review. So in preparation for that next month, if you would like, I would be glad to email you those ordinances and, and those design review guidelines for your review. Secondly, I just want to talk about some of the things you talked about just now. We're talking about the multifamily districts. I think that, I'm always amazed because how many people come up to me now and tell me that they want to keep Fort Thomas the way it is. So I think before we go forward here, maybe we should talk about that general goal of keeping Fort Thomas the way it is. And one of the defining characteristics of Fort Thomas is Fort Thomas Avenue. So we're talking about R3 and R5. I think it's very hard for me at least, and I think a few people sitting around me, to conceptualize what that is. But are you talking about basically swats of Fort Thomas Avenue?
Well, we're talking about the R3 and the R5. We're talking about what's zoned R3 and R5 today.
Exactly. Is that part of Fort Thomas Avenue?
Parts of it are, yes.
So when we talk about R3 is...
R3 is...
Maybe one of the ways to keep Fort Thomas the way it is is to keep the setbacks we have right now on Fort Thomas Avenue. There's a natural, I don't know if it's in the ordinance, I don't know what it is. But if you go up and down Fort Thomas Avenue, you could kind of snap a, a plumb line and there is a natural setback on both sides in many of the streets. And I don't care if we're talking about single-family or if we're talking about multifamily, we're talking about San Serena, we're talking about the Shell Station down the south side, there are setbacks for that. So I would just ask you that, you know, you're talking about right now, Alicia, that we can't, they could put a parking lot right in front. I'm hoping that perhaps in your regulations, you would create that there would be that natural setback that we already have so that we can keep Fort Thomas Avenue the way that it is.
So yes, that's one of the things we just talked about was prohibiting parking lots in front, front yards because right now they aren't there, but they potentially could go there.
Would it be possible to put in a zoning code that we keep the front setbacks for any new construction where they are right now in Fort Thomas Avenue?
So keep in mind, and let's go back to the slide. So the R3, which is what's predominantly along Fort Thomas Avenue, the minimum front setback is thirty-five feet. And that may or may not be what you're talking about. Because in some cases it may be closer and in some cases it may be further back. If it's further back, they can certainly do that because the minimum setback just says you can't be any closer to the front property line than thirty-five feet.
What do we have now? What are the majorities of those houses on, on Fort Thomas Avenue?
Again, we're not talking about highs, we're talking about those small multifamily.
People talking about multifamily, so...
Yeah, yeah. And it varies. It varies for a couple of different reasons. It varies because of where the street underwakes and it varies because of where the front property line sits relative to the street. We do have provisions within the ordinance that says, for example, if it's closer than thirty-five feet, then you can do the average. And that's a way of attempting to keep that line in place without going wholly, wholly along the boulevard, the avenue and saying from A to B, the front setback is twenty-five feet. And from B to C, it's thirty feet. And from D to E, it's forty-five feet. So the, historically, what's been done in this ordinance is using that average. And that's simply a way to keep in mind that that front line is respected without having to physically look at every single solitary piece of property along the avenue and measure its front setback to the right of the line.
Sure.
Where did you pick, come up with thirty-five feet? Because that is the standard that's in the ordinance today. Okay? So I'm not proposing, and that's what I'm talking about. If it is on the screen without any bolding or any underlining, then that is the standard today.
But you were saying the standard today is they could put a parking lot in front of the yard.
So let's keep, let's separate those two issues.
Okay.
Let's separate what the building is and where the parking is. So yes, right now, off the top of my head, I cannot think of any place in the ordinance where you, that would prohibit the placing of a parking lot in front of some of these R3s. And as we were talking about, that would greatly disrupt place, would greatly disrupt your vision of what Fort Thomas is today. And so what we just talked about was adding a provision within the R3s in particular that would prohibit front lawn parking lots. So while it's not currently in the ordinance, the four planning commissioners here are recommending that it be placed in the ordinance as a part of this rewrite.
And if I may, really quick, just to add to that, there is distinguishing differences between a structure, physical structure and a parking lot. Obviously, there's different levels of imposition. So that, that's why the setback of thirty-five feet that Elisa mentioned isn't necessarily to the parking lot. It's to general instructions.
And you all just, I think you just signed off on a parking structure somewhere. I was a little confused about where that parking structure was signed off for just now. You asked about if, if parking structures were okay someplace, maybe in the conservation districts or preservation districts?
So in the multifamily right now, parking lots and parking structures are, are accessory uses, which is not appropriate in my opinion. And so what I asked the planning commissioner as well is can we make parking structures a conditional use, which means we can put even greater standards on them. And so probably three months from now, all these standards for conditional and restrictive uses will be in front of the commission.
When you were talking about the glamping and the, the camping, were you talking about just the riverfront district or the preservation districts also?
We're just talking about the R3 district, river preservation district.
So instead of making that a, would that be a permitted use or do you say a conditional use?
Conditional use.
Instead of putting that in there right now, because my understanding was part of the desire for the riverfront area someday in the future might be to do rock, walking trails down there, biking trails down there, those kinds of things. Could the camping, I mean, I just don't know how putting an RV park down there would, would work with that? Is that something that could be not done right now, but be, be put in the future, not be part of the riverfront district right now, but if someone ever wanted to put that in the future, then come before the planning commission and ask them to have that put into the zoning then?
So I don't know what your concern is about or what, how it would be a conflict to have ramping and walking trails. I'm not really sure what that conflict is. Certainly the planning commission and the city council can always update the use table at some point in time in the future if they choose to do so. What the planning commission and the city council and the board of adjustment cannot do in the state of Kentucky is what's called a use variance and specifically allow a use that is not permitted within the district. That is not allowed by Kentucky state law. So therefore, it has to be listed in the permitted use list in order for it to even be considered.
So I guess my problem with it is, you know, we get the potential, what you're putting in here is the potential to have an RV park all along the river down there. And I mean, I know we're talking years in the future, but we're talking about the ramping. We're not talking about pitching tent. We're talking about, at least my idea of planting RVs, I know, is to have a nice RV down there. I'm just trying to understand why we would allow for an RV park in what is potentially a beautiful area along the river, why we would put that in now. Because maybe one or two people said it at some point in the comprehensive planning meetings that were seven years ago. I'm just understanding why, maybe instead of doing it now, if that comes up in the future, that we consider that. And the reason this is a concern for me is I have a home in Florida. And in Florida, there were proposals to put RV parks all along the bay. And that was very, very difficult to get that out. So rather than having this maybe used in the future, why do it at all? Why not wait and see how that develops and then go from there?
And certainly the planning commission and the city council can make that choice.
I hope you guys will make that choice.
Thank you.
My, my name is Melanie Powers. I live here in the Park, Mount Pearson. And I wasn't going to speak, but Peggy's comments about the river, river area, I'm sorry if I'm not saying that correctly. You know what I mean. Have there been environmental studies done about this? The reason I ask is I'm into birding and I don't know if any of you are or know that Fort Thomas itself and extending south and then all the way across the Ohio River into the Miami Valley, or sorry, Miami River area there where the conservation delta is, we are one of the major migratory routes in the entire east of the Mississippi River, the entire country here. So when I think about, as Peggy mentioned, parking lights, lights are very, very detrimental to migrating species, birds, butterflies, et cetera. Parking, because you're not just, you know, going to drop in or walk into this glamping or RV site. So you have parking, you have lights for parking, et cetera, et cetera. And I won't go into it, but I think you get my drift of what direction I'm going here with this. So I'm very concerned about the wildlife and if environmental studies have been done about this, I'm also concerned as a resident of the park about lighting and noise because I know a lot of people know about the bars and riverfront, whatever that concert venue, it's way be, uh, younger, much younger people than I am that's across the river. Riverbend, sorry, thank you. And boats and stuff. Riverbend, when I'm in my home inside with the AC running in the summer, I can hear that. So granted, that's going to be a lot, a lot louder and it's a, you know, bigger deal. So I'm not comparing them apples to oranges, but yet are, will we have noise ordinances about it? All these types of things are going through my head, especially the people who are on Alexander Circle. Of course, they're going to be right there, so they'll be closer to it. So I just feel like, are we putting in safeguards? Are we looking at this such as environmental standards before all of these uses permitted or conditional or restrictive get codified and solidified? I'd like to, we could, please put a brakes on it a little bit and then get more public discussion, particularly the people who will be most impacted by it. In, in other words, like those of us in the park and various, haven't lived here long enough to know all the streets. Manor, maybe the one that goes along the river, is that Manor?
Manor.
I mean, I, I know they would hear it. So I think you get the drift of what I'm trying to say about those areas.
Yes, ma'am, I do. And, and as you probably pointed out, as a conditional use, we can put, we being the city can put all kinds of conditions that deal with parking and lighting and that the city already has nuisance and noise ordinances. But that's part of the reason it's a conditional use is because it's not a use that you want to allow without some, having some discussion and some thinking about. And so I appreciate your comments because as we're starting to craft the conditions, I mean, first of all, the use hasn't been permitted yet.
Right, right.
But if the council and the, the planning commission want to permit it, it's very, very important that we think about all of these things and have all of those conditions listed and having conditions that are meaningful and help mitigate those impacts.
Great. And will there be environmental...
I don't know that necessarily.
Necessarily.
Don't worry about it. The system here is awful. I don't know if it'll necessarily be environmental things and environmental impact things because these are parcels that are really probably aren't going to rise to that level. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't think about it and think about carefully what those conditions would be if the planning commission and the council will ultimately decide that that's a use they want there. I mean, Peggy's, they may decide they don't want it there. They may decide they want it six years from now, whatever the case may be. But it's very important that we hear your comments because truthfully, I didn't know that it was a birding migration route.
Very important.
So we need to think about those types of things in terms of the conditions that we like.
Could we go back to the screen, if you mind about that? I have another question. Yeah. Kay, oh, sorry. What are sexually oriented businesses?
Adult bookstores, adult mature.
Just carries. Yeah, sexually oriented businesses are precisely what you think they would be. And currently they are permitted within the RP district as the only place in town where sexually permitted, sexually oriented businesses are permitted.
By that, sorry, I'm really showing my age, I guess. Were you talking like go-go dancing? Are we talking prostitution?
No, ma'am. We're not talking about anything that is illegal, but yes, it is...
Like strip bars and burlesque and...
Yes, ma'am. And, and the reason that comes about and a lot of places put it either a district office or an industrial district is because it is protected by the US Constitution. And many places, yeah... And many places, and many places will put it in these sort of out of the way districts. So that is where, in the past, Fort Thomas has decided that it's going to stay where it should be in order to meet those constitutional issues. As we talked about back in December or whereabouts, we don't have, we as the city of Fort Thomas don't have unlimited authority on what we have to do under that nature. And we're restricted by what the constitution has added. And it typically comes, you know, in sexual businesses and signs and those kinds of things. And then in Kentucky, you're also restricted by what KRS 100, that's the state enabling legislation says in terms of what you can regulate. And very directly, it says how you regulate things. But in that particular case, it is a constitutional issue.
But I would assume there could be some pretty strict conditions on that also.
You can, yes, definitely. There are, you know, most places have spacing standards and very tightly define what they mean by sexually oriented business and those kinds of things.
Most zoning maps put them in places where it really be incredibly expensive to develop. So we meet the legal requirement by having a location that they're allowed. But, you know, usually because of hogging, and that sort of thing, it really would be extremely difficult to develop that work. And that's kind of how you meet letter of the law, but don't really allow it to exist in there. Going back to the RV camps, when someone says RV park, I think we all have a picture of something we don't really want here. So we probably need to define that better and maybe talk about things like density. So we're not talking about trailers that are all about being parked from each other. I think if we can define that more closely and talk about density and that sort of thing, that could probably.
Well, if I may, one thing that just happened that, again, living here in Power Park, I'm very, very concerned about historic regulations of the three residential areas. And I don't know if recently you walked on the main trail down here, right behind MS Hall, and that very large, very large home that was just built was just completed.
That's another issue that we're not going to discuss tonight. So we need to, we need to really kind of move along.
Yeah, if you just give me a minute, it does pertain to this. They have an RV in their yard, but you can see from the trail with lights going all down the side of the property. So.
Well, RVs are a different portion where they are allowed in rear yards. Everybody is allowed to have a camper, trailer, or RV. So there are exceptions to every rule. But we can certainly, you know, address the situation if it's, if it's a problem.
Okay.
Do we have photo metrics requirements for developed plans? I mean, she talked about light pollution and that sort of thing. Do we have that currently in the zoning? Well, we usually require it. I don't know the precise language, to be quite honest, but with, with the most recent development, it was required as part of our, our plan. So I haven't looked at that in the, in the concentration of ourselves.
It would also make sense to include it specifically for certain uses as well, so.
Hi, I'm Ma'am Genthur. I've lived nineteen months, and I'm here representing for Thomas Forest Conservancy. I'm on the board. And I just wanted to quickly make a comment related to the conservation district zoning. Our conservancy has identified a number of areas, particularly hillsides, that were dedicated to protecting and hopefully are protected. And the way that we've been doing that, we've been approaching that sometimes through trying to get people to sign on for conservation need easements or restrictive covenants. This is only a category for a conservation district would really support our ends and I think would be something that we could be mutually happy about, be able to protect that hillside through something as simple as zoning with, with conditions. So I just wanted to say that, that we're in favor and would be happy, would really like to work with the law for that. And that's it. Thank you.
Hi, Elizabeth Alley Green, 45 Lockwood Place. So I have two questions. You mentioned about the cremation facilities within the existing funeral homes. And then, sorry, Tim asked a question about it and he said, and he was told we're going to discuss this later. But then you approved that we're going to allow the funeral homes, but we're not going to permit any crematoriums in them. Is that a true statement?
No, ma'am. I mean, at least if I can explain it a little bit better. So all of the city is roped into zoning districts. And you can see the existing zoning district map over there. And what Mr. Michael was talking about was, as I understood, if I misunderstood, you can tell me, was for the central business district. And what I, what I said was, we haven't talked about in express detail the uses that would be permitted in the central business district. And what we're talking about tonight was just specifically funeral homes with crematoriums in the R3 and the R5. So.
So Mall and Camp Funeral Home on the avenue, that is in what is, we've got?
Though I think it's City D, it might be.
No. No.
It's actually a single family. It's in, give me a second. It's in, it's in an R1C.
So it's an R1C?
Okay, so you.
Dobbling of the street is in an R3.
Okay, so we do have a R3 that we said no crematoriums in?
That is what this group is recommending to the city council, is that there would not be any crematoriums within the R3, which is.
So does everybody, do you agree with that? Tim?
Yes.
Do you agree with no crematoriums in the R3s?
So what we're talking about, yeah.
Okay. All right. Is it, does that doesn't have one now?
Not that I'm aware of.
But we're preventing them from everyone, but they don't have it now.
And if they did have it now, and I'm going to chase this rabbit because we're going to get to a potential layer, if they did have it now and the ordinance is altered, we change it, that it would become a non-conforming use.
So there would be no grandfathering?
If it's a non-conforming use, we could have grandfathering, yes.
Oh, okay. Non-conforming use, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
All right. And the second question is about the glamping. We have the conditional use that you guys were talking about, that then Peggy was talking about. Why do we not just say we don't want to have any glamping and address it if it ever comes up? Why are we sitting here, oh, we're going to put limits on it, we're going to do this, we're going to do that? Why don't we just say, because it's when everybody's power right here now to say, we do not want glamping in the RP district? So again, who, who, do we, do we want glamping there?
But the comprehensive plan, that's what we take into account as well.
The comprehensive plan was set, was six years ago. It was intended by a variety of people. Okay, all right. Again, it's outdated already, we're five years, we're five years past that. So I guess my question is, each one of you, you guys, everybody here wants to have anything under conditional use. Is that what you guys are saying?
It's not really what we want. We're here to try and take that comprehensive plan and make it work with our ordinance. I mean, what we want, we're not just making this up, you know, as people want. They're taking that plan and trying, trying to put it in language that will be in zone ordinance. And then it's voted on by city council.
But the thing, so why are we even going through this facade here of going through and saying, okay, we can do it, we can not do it, we can make it conditional, we can not allow it?
We hear your, your comments on that and we'll take that into account.
No, I'm just.
Sure.
You know, just.
Sure you spent the whole, the whole thing.
I'd just like to say one thing about the process. So again, we're Phase Two of us, and there are two more before we get to the end. And so what the commission does tonight is we're having these policy discussions. In some places at very high levels and in other cases at very tiny levels. And the commission is having a discussion here. No decisions are being made, it's just, this is what we're thinking at this moment. And really, in truly, like what you see on the screen, you know, they can, we can change next month, we can change in Phase Three, and it's a box, it's not a, a difficult thing to change with the planning commission and the city council, although we don't want to. So we're having input now, we have input tomorrow at Fort Thomas Coffee, and we're still very, very early in this process. So please continue to give us your comments and your concerns, though the person that was ahead of you, Miss Governor, raised some really big concerns that I wrote down. And so really, this is, I wouldn't say that it's not a facade, it's really an opportunity for us to hear what you have to say. And we're still early in the process, even though it feels like we've been doing it forever, we're still early in the process. I'm sorry, ma'am, please go ahead.
Bring the player, because Peggy is always good. It's the Nina Frontal and 35 Lockwood, south end of town. And you kind of, you kind of slid in where that should be on 27 when we talked about the crematorium. Where on 27 are you thinking that that would be more feasible?
Potentially, it could be in the Alexander of High Beach District, which is actually our next topic of conversation.
And that's what I'm saying, what part of 27? Are you talking down by the old facility? Are you talking about where, you know, further on out toward the St. Stevens Cemetery type of stuff? I'm, I'm overprotective of my Southland family. I really want to not have it turned into co-branding evidence.
Right. And certainly, again, if the commission and city council would prefer not to permit either by right or strictly a conditional crematoriums at any of our funeral homes, and I don't think there are any funeral homes in 27 at the moment?
St. Stevens.
Is that funeral home registered somewhere?
Well, I don't know. Is it just the cemetery?
Yeah, and again, we're just talking about funeral homes, we're not talking about cemeteries. Even though, let's be clear about it, there are some cemeteries that do have cremation facilities. And we will define them, because your cemeteries are located in some very interesting places. So we will define that as not included, the crematorium. So please, you know, that again, all of these pieces work together in terms of regulations and definitions. The question to me was, where would it might be appropriate in a commercial or an office or industrial district to have something like that? And I said, perhaps, you must believe that, which is what you see on the screen, those places, these three places.
And I'm looking at right up the street from me.
And so if you have concerns about having a funeral home with a crematorium, here's the place to say that. But I would also say to you, that if the issue is a cemetery, my recommendation would be that the cemetery not have crematoriums.
I didn't want a storage unit. And I don't, I don't want sexually orientated businesses. I don't want, I mean, do you even know what really goes on with crematoriums? Do you even know that that's going on? I don't know. I think I would have to myself research a little bit more. Wouldn't we really know that that's what's going on? Would there be some kind of form of evidence that's going on? I don't know. So I don't want to totally say.
So when I first started doing this third year, I should be telling.
But I, but I don't, I just don't like that sudden drop of, I'll put it on 27. And I heard through the plan that we were talking about, that we, and I was on one of the plan meetings and stuff, everything was always, oh, we'll, we'll put that on the south end of town. We'll allow that on the south end of town. And I don't want everything to just be on the border on that way out. I don't want it to turn into an industrial type. I want to keep some of what we have, which are some pretty homes out there. They may not be big mansions, but there's some really cute homes. So that's one thing. And the other thing on the glamping thing, with, society has changed a lot since we had those planning commission meetings that we did. Living conditions have changed a lot. And recently, I had seen some news reports that a particular president's suggestions were to give grants to certain cities or towns or what have you for living conditions for more lean towards Section 8. Other things that I've seen in the news are businesses are shutting down because these RV units are coming in with tents and RVs and they're overtaking cities because of homelessness. And I, I don't want to sound cool, but then I don't want to see our river area turn into a potential, not glamping, but a homeless migrated area either. I don't want that potential to be there either. So I'm open for maybe some suggestion, but I kind of go along with that department. Is it too soon that we're talking about it right now when there's so many? No, it's not too soon. Peggy, please help me.
No, I'm just, we're here to listen, we're just making a presentation. And the commission is just making recommendations of what the city is tweaked to. But council can totally go the other way and maybe they don't agree with the glamping and stuff down the river or stuff like that. So this is the proper time to talk about all this stuff, to get the public's input, which is why there's a public meeting. And this is required by the state statutes to have a public meeting when discussing the zoning ordinance, because they don't want surprises for the public.
Well, that's where I don't want to be surprised one day and find that it's actually a living facility, even though we, in my mind, I think the glamping is drop in, go out, drop in, go out. But then one day you might go down through there and you've actually got a community that you don't realize. And that's the only objection that I would have about it.
And that's a viable objection. And so it's something we'll take into account while we're doing this process. I mean, at this point, the commission is, they're only a recommending body anyway to the city council. And they're hearing all this stuff. And they made the recommendation, kind of like a committee goes to, at the state level and the federal level, at the Congress and stuff, they hear it and make a recommendation to the body as a whole, which will be the city council. And then they make the final decision, but that's not going to be for a while. And like Elisa said, we're still very early on this process of developing these standards. And we can, we want this input to understand better what the city as a whole wants. So we would definitely take this into account and proceed and make changes and also listen to changes that are recommended by the commission and even council when they hear it.
The only thing is sometimes some of us, for various reasons, work or life or outside city council meetings and stuff, sometimes we can't make it. Like tonight, I'm here, I don't know that I can make it to the next one. And my intent would be, and my intent is to watch the video, but watching the video, I now then have been restricted, I can't give my input.
You can email any of us with your questions and we can respond or.
And bring those up, or comments, and we can bring those up to the board. And make sure, that's what Elisa's doing with the, she mentioned about the meeting for tomorrow. We did last week, she brought those topics up, and that's why we're dispersing those to our, our planning.
Great. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. My name is Ma'am Genthur, and I've lived here for about fifty years and in my house forty-five years. I'm seventy-four years old. I love Fort Thomas the way it is. I have three daughters that have grown up in a very decent, clean community. I live on Shaw. And what bothers me is why, I know why, I just don't understand. When I come out of my street, go up Lumley, I don't want to see a bunch of shops. I want to see the old homes, the old history of Fort Thomas. And that's what I hate. And the other thing I was wondering about is, does any of this go on a ballot that the city of Fort Thomas can vote on? Like, for instance, the sexually oriented place, would that be put on a ballot? Because ninety percent of the people would say no, in my mind, I don't know. But there's just a lot. But there's just a lot of things that I don't even think should be approached, and that's one of them. And for the plan, does any of this plan get put on a ballot to be voted on for the city?
No. So this, this is the process. This Planning Commission, this is why you're here, to make these comments. It will go to our Planning Commission, ultimately be recommended to council at a much later date. You know, this is probably going to be toward the end of the year. As far as the CBD questions you have, we're going to be discussing that next month. You're welcome to come back there. As far as the sexually oriented businesses, as Elisa said, we are required by law to have these opportunities for, for that, since it is a constitutional right. We have to provide those, those, if we do not provide them, they could come into the center of town and put them wherever they want. So we're providing a spot that is least likely for them to be. We have to do this by law.
Yes, you're also invited, young men, young high school.
This, the likelihood of this happening, as Jerry said, is zero to, about zero to none, because it's all floodplain, it's.
They will find their way there, believe me. I have three teenage daughters in their own, and have a family of their own. Teenagers will find a way. So that's all I have to say, and good luck doing this.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure if assessing the CBD next month, um, I think we'll be looking at our other districts next month. But the homes that are currently on Lumley right now, that are zoned, single family, I don't think the Planning Commission is looking to change that any. Now, there are a few in there that are currently zoned, central business district, most of them are not. And you can see on the existing zoning map, it's over here where those are currently zoned, single family.
I can make one comment. We don't vote on the ordinance, but you vote for your City Council. And that's where the politics are involved. If you don't like what's happening, you talk to your City Council people, because your voters are the ones that put them in.
Exactly.
Yeah. So I, I would much to think that you don't have a choice here as far as the vote goes.
Well, the only thing I think of is the small group, when there's thousands of people in Fort Thomas who never hear of this. So you wonder, is it really going to be changed? Is it going to be changed to the better? Or is it going to stay? I personally would like it to stay the way it is, but the people here, they have their own.
The Planning Commission lives in the city, just like you do, and are concerned about the city also the way it develops.
Thank you. I actually, I go to the kids.
It seems adversarial, it's not adversarial at all. I mean, whereas this is just like you are, and want what's best for the city.
I'm Joan Ferris of Sixty-Six Bernie. I did want just one clarification. Was it decided tonight that as a group, they were saying yes to the camping and the RVs in the, um, RP district? Was that in what you're going to say as a recommendation?
Yes, yes, I think that's what, I think that's what we said, that we'd like to consider as conditional use in the river preservation district.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. Another one was, when this comes to City Council, which I understand the process, that the, this comprehensive, this not comprehensive plan, this recommendation will come to them, is it voted on section by section, or is it taken or leaving?
So, um, it can go either way. The process that we think is going to happen now is it will go more section by section, and that we will spend several meetings with the City Council going through section by section, even before they get it in front of them to adopt, so that we can have some fairly in-depth conversations.
Conversation, that part, that sounds perfect. But during the actual adoption, meeting, process, is it a take it all or leave it all?
It is technically, technically, it is take it all or leave it. But I have never, ever been to one of those situations where something doesn't get changed. But because this is such a large document, which is huge, is a huge document, um, we will have probably two meetings ahead of adoption, maybe four, to try and have section by section conversations, because we do not want to be in a position of saying, here's this huge document, take it or leave it, without having had an opportunity to have those conversations ahead of time with City Council.
That sounds great. I mean, I don't know how it could be any other way, but it's good to hear you say that it won't be the other way.
That's subject of the, of the meetings requirements of the State and Council. So those are not held in a back room someplace, they are public meetings.
Another good thing to hear, thank you for that. Um, you mentioned how the hundreds of people were on the, um, comprehensive plan.
I was there the first night that they opened, and it was standing in Lumley in the City Council chambers.
Well, there were thirty-one on the planning and zoning section of the planning, of the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, because that was the one that had the most people.
No, no, no. This was, the documents came out from the planning, uh, the comprehensive plan committee.
There were like six different subcommittees, maybe seven.
Oh, I saw them all.
Yeah, but only one of those was planning and zoning.
Right, and there were thirty-one participants on that.
Yeah, okay.
So whether people spoke or not, I, I know this has come up before, to make decisions on a six-year-old plan seems really not good. Elisa said something so brilliant last month, I think it was last month, she said, in talking retail, which I know this is off the subject, but it's relevant to all of this, retail has changed since then. That comprehensive plan was pre-COVID. Shopping isn't the same as it was. And she said, kind of, it becomes irrelevant. A six-year-old policy document is irrelevant. But anyway, that's, um, my last comment. I'm under the three minutes, although the website says ten is allowed, but, um, that's the website. It'll never happen. That's what we heard about the infamous one hiding. So there's some hesitation. I think, it'll, it'll, this will never happen, don't worry about it, we'll put it in there, this will never happen. And I think one of the things that has brought a lot of people to the forefront is, yeah, it could. If you put in that it can, then it could, and can. Thank you.
So at this point, along, I'm sorry, I'll be clear. Hi, my name is Vicki Ellis. I live at Forty-One Grant in Fort Thomas. And I, I agree with a lot of the comments that's been made this evening, and I understand that we're all trying to work through this. In regards to the river preservation region, I know that there's a lot of recreation, but I don't really consider recreation as preservation. So if you could further explain, you don't have to do it now, I know it's late, but I, I would like to know more about how, what we consider preservation versus recreation, and how that impacts not only, as we move forward and discuss things like granting, which has a real ransom Missouri kind of feel to it personally, but, you know, as we move forward, I, I think that's a lot of the concerns that people have, is are we preserving or are we exploiting our, our resources, our natural resources? And I think that's, for me, that's a concern. One of the things that we have is beautiful, beautiful forested hillsides here, beautiful walking trails, and these are things that we obviously all really love and are important to our identity here in Fort Thomas. Also, in, in addition to that, I live along the Twenty-Seven corridor, which I consider residential. And I, I don't feel like it's an industrial corridor. We have a wonderful school, we have a wonderful neighborhood, and we have residences all along Twenty-Six, especially close to the school. So I, I think we all, in our region of town, really want to have respectful businesses and appropriate businesses zoned next to our homes. And even as it stands now, there are some that, it, it's a concern for a lot of us. So I, I would like that, for you to think about how we preserve the river preservation area, how we preserve our green space, and our forested areas, and our residences. Let you get on.
Thank you. So a couple things. We do have to allow private property owners a use of their land that is viable, and that is something that is required by the U.S. Constitution. So we can't just simply say a private piece of property cannot have any development. That is not within the purview of the city of Fort Thomas. We can talk about uses, we can talk about intensity of uses, we can put conditions on, we can do all of those things. However, we cannot put such owners' conditions that someone can't use their land if it's private land. So that's where we have to balance, you know, the public interest with the private interest. And it is, is a very difficult thing to do when you're talking about preservation. I, I very much appreciate your, the comments, and I just want you to know that.
No, I, I realize that. And I, I know that a lot of the changes would not affect any particular property until it's sold.
Well, that's not necessarily true. Anyone who owns the piece of property that is privately held could develop it today in conformance with the RP district. And much of what's being proposed out here is not a huge change to what's currently in your ordinance. Right now, it says recreational uses, and some zoning administrators said an RV park fits a recreation use and allowed it. My thought process was, we need to say that it's allowed conditionally, if you're going to allow it at all, and we need to think very carefully about what those conditions are. Things such as it cannot become a permanent home. No one can live there for three hundred sixty-five days out of the year. You know, those types of things. So we are trying very hard, as we've talked about many times, to define our uses very closely. So for again, example, you can't have a cremation twenty minutes in there. So all of the pieces have to come together. How you define the use, where you permit the use, how it could be built on the lot, and if it's conditional, what those conditions are. And I know this is an incredibly technical conversation, and I apologize for that. And that's part of why these conversations have gone on for so long, is because we spend so much time sort of trying to put all the pieces together. So, um, and, and I don't think that we think of the U.S. Twenty-Six as an industrial corridor, and we'll talk more about that in a minute. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, we move on to Alexandria Pike. So the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district will only apply in those areas with existing commercial uses along Alexandria Pike, and they are the blue that you see on the map. As I talked about a few times already, please keep in mind that zoning districts create place both by uses and development standards. Notice that we are replacing the general commercial, the highway commercial, the professional office, and the industrial park districts that currently exist along Alexandria Pike with this one district that is use and place specific, Alexandria Pike mixed-use district. Those other non-residential uses that I just listed can exist anywhere in the city. So what we're doing is creating a district that is specifically for U.S. Twenty-Six. The intent of this district is to develop a fully integrated mixed-use corridor with well-designed sites and buildings that contain commercial, residential, and office uses that support the economic development and redevelopment consistent with the comprehensive planning. This district does not alter or affect any of the homes that are along U.S. Twenty-Six if they are zoned, single family today. And most of those homes are zoned R-1C. And again, the zoning map is over here, and you can see that. So if it's zoned R-1C today, it's going to be, at least my recommendation, it's going to, it's going to be zoned R-1C at the end of this process. As we've talked about numerous times, the planning, the City Council can make a different decision. Um, but the first question for the Planning Commission is, do you want to allow several of the R-3s to go from R-3, which is multifamily, as we've talked about previously tonight, to the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district? The specific places I'm talking about, our, where Safe Ship is to Hawthorne, and there's a picture right up there, you can see one of the R-3 properties. And then also across the street from that, the R-3 property there. And again, that's multifamily that you see on the top of the picture. So do we include those parcels in the mixed-use district? And you zone them from R-3 to the Alexandria Pike mixed-use? And if you say yes, then you have another set of questions, but that's the question. Do we want to think about those sites potentially, over time, developing into a part of this mixed-use corridor instead of being restricted to R-3? And again, we don't have to decide tonight, but it's a question we'll ask. And we're not going to hold against the, the person who has the Kansas City flag on the map.
Oh, yeah, we are. So what's allowing the Alexandria Pike mixed-use district that's not? Right now, those parcels are single-family homes, and the diverted offices and some abandoned homes.
No. So the, the places I just mentioned, on the same side of the street as Safe Ship, is this.
There are two single-family homes.
And there are two single-family homes there. Yeah, between there and, and Safe Ship. And then across the street, the R-3 is that. But the gentleman is correct, there are two single-family homes. Actually, there are three.
And I question the map, because I don't remember this ever being so general commercially shown, the map is general.
Which one, sir?
The two that are in between Safe Ship and.
Oh, those are actually zoned R-3.
The map is general.
Yeah, those are zoned R-3. If the map is incorrect, I'll have it corrected, but that's what they are.
If we put it into the mixed-use, then more general commercial uses could be made where we've got, uh, multifamily right now.
Correct. And, and, and there are other R-3 parcels further down the Pike. And what I'm asking is, for these, just of these two particular areas, should they be bought into the mixed-use district? And there's a R-3 today.
In the mixed-use district, the, all, all these uses are allowed, or are there conditional uses in there, or?
So that would actually be the next question. So we could, because right now, the used table is just, the residential is dwellings above non-residential uses.
Not first floor.
But not first floor. So if we want to include them into the mixed-use district, we could do one of two things. You can make multifamily a permitted use completely, or you can say the ones that exist today are permitted uses. Therefore, they would be conforming, but then you can be constructed. So let's keep, let's think about what that means. So let's just say where, and I hope I'm not making it right, where Safe Ship is. If you made that, if you say that as permitted uses multifamily without commercial use first floor, the Safe Ship would not be allowed into the apartment complex. Is that what you want for your corridor? Or you can just say, if you don't typically want to create non-conforming uses, that if the apartment complex exists today, it can be, it can continue to exist and be conformant. And then we do the same thing for the homes. We don't want to make them.
I misread your map, Karen, all of those, those multifamily, potential preservation.
Yeah, you're all right. But thank you for letting me know.
So this is similar to the, what we were talking about with the central business district before, of that allowing first-floor residential or whatever else?
It, it is similar, but again, the.
I know, it's a different area.
Yeah, yeah, but the problem question is, do you want to bring them into the mixed-use district? Yes or no? If the answer is yes, then we can talk about how we bring them in. So, you know, fundamentally, do they stay R-3, or do they become apartment mixed-use?
My personal opinion would be keep them R-3.
Okay. Okay. No, we'll keep them R-3. I mean, again, I just bring up the question for this reason. Do you want to bring them as a part, because think about, look at the map. These non-residential parcels are pretty much in the net, up and down the floor door. Do you want to add some intensification at the southern end of the parcel, southern end of the floor door, in the mixed-use district? Yes or no? And, and I do know, so we'll leave them as R-3.
Maybe just basically talking about expanding the district, you know, one step at a time. And I just, my thought is just, why do that right now? We were going to expand commercial uses out of the mixed-use district. Agreed.
So I guess I'm confused. Do we want, do we want to, maybe you could.
I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood what Jared said. No, I was agreeing with you that we should do them R-3.
Okay, so we'll leave them R-3. All right. So. So typical in terms of uses that are permitted in this district, typical office uses are permitted in addition to dwellings above non-residential. Typical retail and personal service uses are also permitted. But given the vision from the district, we should discuss the permitted uses in the vehicle and equipment category. As drafted, auto service stations, drive-throughs, the freestanding in a section that a principal use, and vehicle fueling stations are conditional uses. Are those uses appropriate? That's the first question. On the corridor? And if so, do you concur with a obligation to condition? And keep in mind, where else are you going to permit them? Where else am I sitting?
Can I ask a question too? You know, with electric vehicles and that, we were talking about charging stations as well. Is that fitting with the uses that you've got now?
So typically, what we're doing now is define, it doesn't say it's a station, it's a fueling station. And so we're defining a fueling station as including, including charger. It just has to. And we're doing that for a couple of different reasons. One, it has to. And two, we want to make sure it continues to be accessory in most cases, unless you specifically want it to be a principal use. And most of my clients don't. We just want it to be accessory to, you know, the gas station or to the parking lot for the retail store or whatever. So the question being, let's just take, you know, service stations, that's basically like auto repair, drive-throughs, and vehicle fueling stations. Are they appropriate on these locations that are shown on the map on this quarter? And if so, is it okay to have them as conditional?
We haven't learned that, right?
You do. Okay, so we'll keep them as conditional. Now, I understand that they are objectionable uses, but again, are they? And where else are we going to go? In terms of development standards, rather than just having a minimal front setback, and I'll take a few minutes and remind you what that is in just a second. We are recommending both a minimum and a maximum front setback. When you establish a minimum setback, the building has to be at or behind that line. When you have a maximum setback, buildings can't be located behind the required maximum setback. So why do we do this? A little bit like what we talked about last week. We are tightly defining where the building goes on a lot. Because again, both the uses and the development standards create place. So the establishment of a minimum and a maximum front setback moves the building as closer to a street as currently drafted. So the character of the street is being defined by buildings and not parking lots. In the next few slides, I will show you the setbacks and the parking on several of the lots along the corridor so you sort of remind yourself what it looks like today. And as drafted, the minimum is 24 feet and the maximum is 50 feet in terms of setbacks. And because the corridor is developed in lots of ways, and is predominantly built out, we are proposing giving the Planning Commission the ability to grant waivers to these development standards. And we will talk a little bit more about what waivers are as driven to the administrative chapters. But this gives you the authority, if you have a developed site and someone wants to do something, to not constrain yourself by these development standards, even though these are the standards that potentially you concur are going to be the place that you want along US 27. And then as drafted, property will be required to be behind the front facade of a principal building. Again, we are recommending that the Planning Commission have the authority to grant a waiver. So starting at Hollywood's Drive, and I will tell you that please note on the slides under the map that the parking lots are shown in white. Starting at Hollywood's Drive, the salon at 1600 Alexandria Pike has a setback of 32 feet. And these are all guest rooms based on the G I S. So if you go out there, it's 35 feet. I'm pulling it off a G I S layer. The engineering building at 1538 has a front setback of 65 feet. And Safe Ship at 1504 has a front setback of 11 feet. And I apologize, that's an old photo that was taken last year. The small one-story office building at 1501 has a front setback of 44 feet. The two-story building at 1419 has a front setback of 21 and a half. And the more modern office building at 1403 is set at 24 feet. At 1463 Alexandria Pike, which sits at the corner of Alexandria Pike and South Fort Thomas, the setback is 25 feet at its closest point. The building next door at 880 has a front setback of 58 feet. At the corner of Alexandria Pike and Grand Rue along the corridor, the setback is 22 feet. I don't have setback for the new building, which I apologize, it's a turn directly across the street. And the two-story office building is setback 54 feet at its closest point. As we edge Contra to 471, the Marsh Building has a front setback of 40 feet. The retail store right before you get to 471 has a front setback of 57 feet. Okay, so now that we have run through this, and we have viewed the existing development sites, refreshed our memories about the existing built environment, what are your thoughts about the appropriate front setback along the corridor? And just to remind you, we are proposing a minimum front setback, meaning buildings can't be any closer to the street than 20 feet, and a maximum front setback of 30 feet. So they can't be behind that line. So the question is before you, are those appropriate? And is it appropriate to have a parking behind the front line of the building? Would you, as a Planning Commission, have the authority to grant a waiver under existing conditions if it's necessary on the lot? So those are your questions. What do you think about the front setbacks and the parking?
So Andy showed all those. So the numbers that you've proposed, are those the average to what we've got on the buildings right now? Or?
So let's look at this one. You have setbacks all over the place, essentially. Let's just be honest about it. And you have very different topography from the south end to the north end. So it's somewhat the average, with the goal being that you are building, bringing buildings closer to the street so that you don't have, for example, the position that you have in the lower slide down here, with parking right up against the light of way.
Well, one thing I've heard consistently is that a lot of the citizens want to keep Fort Thomas the way it is. And so do we want to bring buildings to the front? I mean, if everybody likes it the way it is now, I mean, you know, I understand there's something about making this walking and, you know, do away with cars in the front yard or whatever else, but we've got that now. And I hear a lot of people saying, we like it the way it is. And so, I mean, do we want to make people move forward? Or do we, I mean, do we set the standards kind of where the existing buildings are now and let people do additional buildings in those distances? I'm asking the question, I'm not, I'm just, I.
And I certainly can't speak for what people lean consistently by, keep Fort Thomas the way it is. But as I read through that, there is a uniform definition from one end of the corridor to the other end of the corridor as to what that character is along the corridor. So whatever you decide, we need to set that standard now so that hopefully over time redevelopment happens, that begins to create a more cohesive character. Again, y'all know there's apologies and all of that, but starts to have a more cohesive character from one end of the corridor to the other. Because right now, let's just be honest about it. It's five zoning districts, nine residential zoning districts, and an incredible hodgepodge of development in terms of where the buildings are and where the parking is. So my question to you is, what do you think would be more appropriate over time?
Well, before I answer that, would this be somewhere where we could put in subzones based on, just as you mentioned, you know, the south end is completely different than the other? And is this something that we could have different setbacks within that same overall zone, but a subzone or something under there?
We could, we certainly can do subzones. My only hesitation with that is it's going to be quite disjointed because there's no cohesiveness along the corridor. And I think it's a better practice to just say, this is generally what we want, 20 and 30 feet, and then to give you the ability to grant a waiver based on the circumstances. I certainly can look to see if we could come up with a subzone that might work. You know, something different at the south end versus getting closer to 471. But the primary question still retains is, do you want the buildings closer to the street? And where do you want the parking? The subzones are irrelevant until you answer those two questions.
As you said, there was nothing uniform at all about this quarter.
The only uniformity is, is that if you get over 40 feet, start to allow parking in the front.
Every time.
The right of way to the US 27 varies considerably. Like where Jeff says now, there's a vertical cut behind it and it's got to be 6 feet tall. And the only way any of that land is empty now is when it's developed, is to do something really extreme like that. So, yeah, I don't think you have a lot of development of land there. And it is what it is right now. The fact that we have front yards that vary from 20 to 57 feet, it's, I mean, there is no cohesive area or character to the US 27 corridor in this area. So I don't know what to really say about that, other than, you know, most of the time you're looking for orderly growth when you're doing a zoning ordinance and it's just a.
But you do have redevelopment potential. I mean, at your lot, there's not a whole bunch of new land, I mean, a whole bunch of existing vacant land that's going to be developed. You are looking at redevelopment.
For future, I think it would be nice if you had a plan and had it looking similar and having parking behind. That's a future plan. If something was being torn down, would it have to go underneath this new guideline and make it look uniform?
Yes, it would have to, but again.
I think it would look prettier and nicer, is my opinion, and make it pleasing.
And this is a long-term vision.
Correct.
Because I mean, you don't have a lot of vacant land that's going to be developed. And it's all going to be redevelopment, something's torn down, something's put back, or something is added onto in the front, or something like that.
And if you had this plan, it may never happen for five or 10 years or even 20 years. But it's saying that there is a plan of place to make it look nicer if that would happen.
Right, there is a plan of place, this is our vision. But because we do understand, and this is what I'm saying, my recommendation to you, but because we understand the topographical constraints, we understand that there are existing buildings that may want to improve themselves. We don't want to limit that. We don't want to limit someone having the ability to improve their property, even if it's not tearing it down and starting over again. So therefore, we're giving you those waivers. What we have said, this is what we need to support here for the parking and the setbacks. And then you have the authority to move within that if necessary.
Well, it sounds like the whole goal of this is we want to get rid of parking in the front of the building.
Yes, that is what has been stated previously in the Conference of Plains, that that, from one end of the corridor to the other, parking in the front yard is not creating the character of the district that we're looking for.
And I guess that's why I was thinking, you know, the stuff down by the highway that doesn't have residential immediately adjacent to it or really even near it, I mean, it's never going to be walking, you know, a walking area. You're going to have to drive to it and park. And so, I mean, there's different areas within this whole, you know, this whole zone because you've got a whole long corridor there. It seems to me that, you know, it's not necessarily appropriate to ban parking in the front in some of these areas, but others that it would be very desirable to have parking removed from the front or kept from it. But I guess I'm not, I'm not inclined to do that across the board and all of it. I think, you know, I guess I'm thinking that a little bit wider distances may be appropriate that would still allow for parking. You know, if you went to 65 feet or, you know, there's a maximum setback or something that would allow parking. But, you know, again, I think it's appropriate at one end and not appropriate at the other, so.
I think the one comment that Elisa said is that the Planning Commission, when a development would come in or a change, would have the opportunity to grant a waiver to that. So I don't know if that's enough for you.
I hear that, Kevin, but that just, to me, you know, throws into the commission, you know, if we don't like the business, we don't have to grant a waiver. And, I mean, I would much rather have development in these commercial type areas, something that would breed, you know, businesses there, viable businesses. And if we restrict them too much on the parking than that, I think we're chasing people out and chasing redevelopment out. You know, and I understand, I mean, we've got, just like Jared mentioned, we've got some of these places that you can't do anything behind the go-in, you know. And certainly a waiver is going to be necessary, but then, you know, maybe we need to have some kind of guidelines on what those would be, more so than just at our whim as to whether or not to allow the waiver.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing. For us, if we didn't defend ourselves legally and it ever got to that point, we would, just like the zone change where you have to prove certain things, I would think that way, but we'd also have to have a process that you have to prove that somehow you can't develop your land with maximum potential or something if you didn't grant that. There's something about it topographically or just the size or shape of the lot that doesn't allow it to help. We'd have to have a process pretty well defined for granting a waiver.
Yeah, and the draft chapter or draft section 1.10 that's in your packet for tonight, which I don't think we're going to get to, does actually for the first time lay out a process and standards by which to evaluate a waiver. But I hear what you're saying. So let me, look at this next draft of this. Have some, I'm sorry. Have some sub-districts. You know, that's more walkable at the southern end and perhaps a different maximum if you're moving as you get close to 471.
And that's just me, I don't know the rest of you, what you think about that, but I just think there's a wide variation there and it doesn't seem that we can lump everybody in in the same standards.
I agree with Pam that really the quarter would look nicer if the buildings were in the front and the parking were in the back. So, I mean, if we do make that 20 to 30 foot building setback, ultimately, you know, age and disease will change, but if they do change ownership and get redeveloped, I think that would be preferable.
Yeah, future. There's so many new homes coming in that area too. Up on that hill, they're going to come down and walk. People walk up all the time down from Blossom, and Blossom doesn't even have a sidewalk. All those, Fort Thomas over there, so many people come down from there and walk off from Fort Thomas. So it is a walkable area.
So let me do this. Let me, the next time we bring forward, I'll have some sub-districts. And we can, again, refresh our memories about what's there and have another class of discussion about this. And we'll go to them there.
So question. Currently, north and south Fort Thomas have, there's no, oh, 27, there's no side.
North.
South Fort Thomas.
Correct.
Everything's south of the sidewalk.
I mean, I think there's a sidewalk on the left-hand side that'll take you down to the big, right, right.
So we can subdivide those. North, south, there's obviously no sidewalks and you have setbacks further. And then south, you have the closest, right?
Sure.
It would make more sense because people are walking on the sidewalks.
Yeah, I think that's a good decision.
Yeah, I understand. And I don't know, you have C I P to put the sidewalks?
So there is the, there is the US 27 corridor that wants to provide connectivity from Newport all the way to N K U. And that connectivity includes a shared use path. There are challenges associated with it, but, I mean, we can sidewalks and justice challenging areas of the border. I mean, and there's several factors associated with it.
All right, we'll keep thinking about it. I have some general direction tonight, although we can keep thinking about that. So we have two other major topics of discussion before we pause for public comment in terms of the Mixed Use District. One is the design standards and the incentivizing low and green and low impact development. In terms of the design standards, in addition to the comments due to the Design Review Board, we will be charged with reviewing all new construction and building renovations along Alexandria Pike Mixed Use District based on the standards that are in the zoning ordinance that we're about to talk about right now. So the review won't include signs and lighting and the level of laminate review that they will review in the form of the downtown or the midway. They also will have the ability to exempt building modifications that are minor and then to grant exceptions and modifications due to assistance. then to grant exceptions and modifications due to existing site and building conditions. Um, so you know, I keep hearing those words, waivers and modifications and all of that, and we're coping with a built-out environment, we've been trying to create a place here, but we're mindful that there are businesses that are already that may want to invest in the property. The standards require buildings to be oriented toward the US 27. It requires entrances and windows along the front of the building and limits blank kind of door moles. The standards also prohibit cinder block and vinyl siding or cubed and curved awnings. They require facade openings to be vertical, building materials within town to be side off of the ground, rooftop materials, you know, like HVAC units and that kind of thing to be swayed, and that could be occupied or active uses along the first 30 feet of building depth along Alexander Pike. And example facilities will be inserted during the phase three. So our considerations for these are, you know, all of these, the elements of whether the non-residential design that you want regulate, yes or no? Have it fit the light place, are we regulating enough without being too homeless? And again, we don't have to produce these sort of questions tonight, but think about it, think about it, are we really having enough English considered on the zoning board? And as I said, the sweet spot was having some, but not too much. And then, again, I'm sorry, I'm...
Maybe some, some of those are pretty standard.
Which ones? If you don't know, like, maybe you should...
Right, I mean, those are, we had saying that windows would be curved, open up, see straight shit outside, but it should be cubed, curved, I mean, it's very, very technical, very strict.
So maybe the windows and the awnings are too much.
Is this pretty standard for, for other areas?
Yes, it's very standard. Um, it's either the cubed and type of awnings and sides tend to present uses that most places don't want, or works that businesses don't want. Um, so that's pretty normal. The idea that windows have to be vertical is so that it reinforces the shape of the building, those kinds of things. But I tend to, you know, I pretty much think the awnings should stay the way they are. The verticalness probably is too much, but it is a standard that is easy and objective to measure it on, and it creates the verticality that most people don't need to base and license a building, but it is very respectable. I have to admit. So let's pull out the verticality, and we'll put a pin on it.
Well, the pictures you've got there, I mean, do these, uh, existing buildings meet these requirements?
No, well, I mean, the safe ship building has harder windows, for example.
I'm just wondering, you know, how much are we changing from what we've got now? That, you know, are 50% of the buildings there, if we were building them today, they wouldn't meet these requirements?
So just keep in mind that many of these buildings are conversions, like several of those office buildings or houses that people added commercial space to. Let's say they're an engineering building, it would meet all these requirements, for example.
What is that, I guess?
Right. Well, not necessarily.
Maybe not.
But to give you a sense, yes, that building would meet ours. And again, we are looking at both design and your building, right? That's why, for example, we're requiring doorbell materials close to the sidewalk. So it's gonna take combination of design as well as creating buildings that withstand load over time. And then finally, um, you know, do you think the goals and responsibilities of the designer review are appropriate? They repeat them, they have a building to make exemptions, modification...
I probably should say that, having these buildings would be, would be plus if they were made out. I mean, if we could convince people to tear down some of these buildings, people that might be, have such onerous requirements, they would do, because we have really good buildings. I think that would be kind of the top of the right goal.
Yeah, these are not particularly onerous, true for... I hope much worse. We could put them all on one page, just not too much. But again, these are all wrapped, we can come back to it, because I will get rid of the verticality, um, those kinds of things. So as we discussed during Phase One, in order to incentivize green and low-impact development as well as improvements in the lot of way that benefits pedestrians and other multi-modal transportation options, we are proposing to exempt firehouses where it's a border area from providing proofing. If they provide, for example, low-impact development, which would be things like rainwater harvest, harvesting, bio retention cells, rain gardens, if they have the building certifications, or they do public improvements in the lot of ways, such as bus shelters, seating at bus stops, bicycle parking, bicycle repair stations, um, all those kinds of things. And so this is just an incentive for these types of things to be provided. It's not much of one, it's a little bit of one, that lets people know that we value these things. Any concerns with that?
We had the same discussion last year when we were talking about the mortgage, we had the same, we had the same kind of statement, because there was a lot of...
Yeah, and we did, we talked about during, uh, during Phase One when this came up, we were talking about low-impact development and the green building certification, and someone quietly pointed out, since this is your one place in the town where you do have bus service, it would be nice to have also some improvements within the lot of way. And so that was added as another category. We would exempt part of your parking if you provide those kinds of things.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was a very good idea at the time. All right, so let's pause here and see if anybody has any questions or comments.
I got one.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, these chairs are not comfortable.
These are just a couple of general questions. Uh, Sarah, can you run 22 on? When did we start this update?
Oh...
Like a year ago?
Something like that.
Two years ago?
No.
When's it gonna be finished?
Theoretically, about this time next year.
How much does it cost on the city?
There was a, there was also a plot.
This what?
There was a plot, where it started.
So was it like budgeted, a contract, or what?
I'll let Kevin talk about numbers.
Um, whatever it is, too much. Okay, I'll tell you who had the answers.
I don't know, I'm not on the finance side.
I understand. I tell you what your problem is. Uh, you've done talk for two hours, now they give a damn thing. It's a wonderful golden Tony show. Not that I'm against you guys, you guys are doing a good job. But as soon as you say zoning update, the first thing that goes through a person living in Fort Thomas, they visualize a bulldozer headed towards the house on North Fort Thomas every day. Now, I'm not sure exactly what we're updating. You've got 25 foot of this, 50 foot of that, house is carpetized, tree rooms. We've been doing a wonderful job up here for 50 to 60 years, all of a sudden we have to have an update every five years, and we just get some kind of comprehensive plan a couple of years ago, I think that got thrown out the window since it was done. So, I know you guys are just, um, picked this plan and suggested to the city, so I know when we have this city council meeting, whatever year that is, it'll probably get a really big crowd there while people complain. Keep up the good work.
So I'm Tom Morrison, I live in 96 Hawthorne. First of all, foremost, I want to thank you guys for serving this community. This is probably the most political hard-to-deal-with commission that exists in the city, and I appreciate the frustration you probably have to deal with here. But I would like to go back to a couple of things that we said. First of all, there was a question about what the citizens mean when they want to keep Fort Thomas the way it is. I think there's a high degree of, um, concentration on residential space. So where we have single families, keep it zoned to single families. Where we have multi-family available, let's not try to add commercial to it. Um, I think everything I've heard here tonight, for example, what we've talked about in the corridor, you've stuck to that kind of policy, when we talked about that, that area, do we switch it from R3 being part of the mixed-use, and you said no, I was complaining to hear it. Um, I would like to talk about a couple of things that came up. I understand that you have to allow a legally viable business to exist in the city somewhere, you can't just say no, can't go in my city. So I think that there was a little bit of misunderstanding on that, so I get that. Um, there was a discussion about crematoriums being in mixed-use district. Um, I don't know where that was on the slides. You never mentioned the fact that it doesn't need to go there, it could go into a light industrial area district, which I think is more appropriate. So just food for thought, I don't think that you have to allow it in a mixed-use district. If we went through this with the storage facilities, too, way back, we had the same discussion. Um, do you have the slide that shows the height restrictions in the mixed-use district? I did notice something on there.
Yep, so the height is actually, the maximum height is proposed, as you can see, there's no change.
Number seven down there, yes.
Yeah, 50 feet is what the current standard is.
Yeah, and so, I was curious about that, because I think about 50-foot building, I think of like Go-Go Meds down there in Southgate across from, um, Depp's or whatever it is now, Micker Run. Um, do we really want 50-foot tall buildings in our mixed-use corridor, especially on the south end where it's more residential? I mean, down by Depp's maybe, but up in that area, at this point, you might want subzones. Um, and the minimum of 24, almost like you're requiring a three-story building, aren't we okay with one or two-story buildings in the commercial in that south zone?
So 24 would not be three feet, it would be two feet.
Two stories?
Two stories.
I think two stories is fine, but the 50-foot seemed kind of large to me. Just food for thought. And then, um, in terms of the, um, the concept of eventually having, even if it's difficult, some sort of, um, tie-through with the US 27 corridor project, the sidewalks and such, I think encouraging parking to move to the back is a great thing. Um, and I will say, particularly in the south part of that corridor, uh, we have a lot of kids that walk to school along that corridor, and, you know, cars coming out of parking lot, you got more time to see what you're coming out of the parking lot, and you're a little bit farther back on the lot than you had now. I mean, you can't unbelieve the number of kids that literally are biking, walking, whatever, for all those sites reasons. They walk on 27, I'll tell you what, it kind of scares me a little, frankly. But I, anything you can do to kind of give people more time to see as they're coming out of one of those businesses, I think is a great thing. And that was pretty much my comment.
Thank you, sir.
You seem to be hung up on crematoriums. I think what we decided was they shouldn't be in a R3 or R5 zone.
I'm saying this in the mix.
Someone made a comment about the US 27, and that probably shouldn't be the case.
But I don't believe they should be in the mixed-use.
We've talked about that, we've talked about the only family...
I think they were listed, weren't they, now, in the mixed-use file? This is the mixed-use district, and I think we crematoriumed it.
I thought it said without crematoriums.
Was that wrong or what?
I don't...
Or did it just... Okay.
It said here, oh, without crematorium on one of the spots.
Okay, well, that's great, but if you talk about crematorium at some point in the future, like industrial area, I mean, you gotta put them aside.
Well, we don't actually have a...
You don't either?
Uh, it's not, it's not a sexually oriented business, and...
It's not a constitutionally oriented business.
And we don't, what this proposal does is gets rid of the industrial district. There will be no industrial districts locked on the city.
Okay.
So what we part here allowed a clinic, is that you don't allow the use of crematoriums anywhere where you have residences. Yeah, I think that's what we've heard.
So what happens to the industrial, the uses that were permitted in the industrial district today, do those go to where?
So you only have one parcel, move it back over a little bit. So do you see the...
It's down by Marshalls, I think, or somewhere near there. Is that it?
Yeah, there, yeah. Um, that's the only parcel you have today that is done light industrial, that you have an entire district for it. So in terms of the uses that are proposed for industrial homeless district are artisan industrial, a commercial condition, a kitchen, light manufacturing, and research and development. So those are very extremely light industrial uses, and you will notice that they are all restricted, they are not permitted by law. So there will be restrictions in terms of what, in terms of impacts.
That's still to be defined.
Yes, or they'll still be defined, but potentially, intentionally, did not make them permitted by law, even though they're permitted by law today in a light industrial district, because that's not the vision for this corridor. You know, the corridor's not, as someone said, they don't see it as an industrial corridor.
What last question?
Just one second. I see, I just noticed we...
You do have...
B, you guys have the cremation...
Oh, right.
It's also A, C.
A, B.
A, B.
Oh, sorry, okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I...
You're correct, and that's what I was worried about, I think that should be, well, you got one.
We can, but I mean, that's the whole point of this meeting, right? As I said, we've heard we don't want to be there. So I think we just make that change.
Perfect.
On the used end.
The final question relates to tomorrow's night's thing at Fort Thomas Coffee. Is it just a forum of the same you two, or is it? I don't know that I need to go again, if it's this thing, I kind of...
It's just gonna be me, um, but you're welcome. The really, the idea behind it is some people don't feel comfortable getting up and having conversations here.
Sure.
And so it's just to give people another opportunity in a very informal setting to come and ask questions, and to get more informed about the process and that kind of thing. You're more than welcome.
Okay, I think I have my questions answered, I didn't know whether I should, I'm sorry, I was planning on doing it, but it's tough to do all this stuff.
And all of this is on the website?
Yep.
So, I mean, obviously the decisions and discussions that happened tonight, that change under the other classification uses will not be on the website, but all of this ritual is there, so that you can look at it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Where Marshall Building Project says now it used to get camped, that's why it was an industrial zone, was we had a chemical plant there, and it went out of business, or they moved to Florence, or Boone County someplace, a long time ago. So it probably should have been resumed, you know, a couple of years ago, and doesn't have an industrial plant anymore.
I would just like to make a clarification, um, because Jerry brought to mind when you talked about the legality of some of these decisions. There's a lawsuit against the city right now, one of the allegations is that one of the other boards made a decision with that of finding a fact in conclusion of law. Um, when we talked about the campground recreational vehicle park tonight, the only finding of fact I heard was that that was something that was requested in the comprehensive plan. So I've been sitting there going through the comprehensive plan, and what I found is on page, I don't see anywhere in the comprehensive plan that they're asking for an RV park. On page 212 of 225 pages, I want to tell you guys, your job is hard, they have to figure it out or something else, but what they're talking about here is the city owns some riverfront property, and there may be an opportunity to collaborate with riverfront owners on Fort Thomas River Camp's camping, the lamping opportunity. Lamping is a booming trend that offers the ability to experience remote outdoors using rustic lodging, using minimalistic structures like raised tents, treehouses, old railcars, and floating cabins, and enhancing them with amenities. Nowhere in here does it talk about RV park or RVs. So I'm not sure where that came from, but that was the only, um, rationality I heard as only reason for why we would adopt this section on having an RV park or camping, which according to your, um, diagram, looks like it's a need use for that part of the world. So I would just ask that you would reconsider, reconsider your vote. I would ask that you go back and take a look at the comprehensive plan, what it says, what it talks about. Jerry, if it's in there somewhere about RV parks?
I think they talked about different recreation uses, and that's probably all they talked about there.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, this is in page, but this is really a very, very general recommendation, not even one of the main ones. So I would ask you, uh, if you would consider going back, looking in that, considering this next month, because that's, that's a big deal. Um, and Elisa, one of the things I think we're running into problems here, especially when it goes to the finding of facts in conclusion of law. You know, I asked Kevin last summer, and Kevin said, Kevin, you told me you didn't want to pay for this to happen, so maybe, but maybe this will happen. I think it would be so good if you had some slides that show what you're proposing. I think it would be so good if you had some slides that show what you're proposing, what we have now, and the reason. Because I hear a lot of the chefs know stuff, and I don't know that the folks on the planning commission have the opportunity to really understand the reasoning. You may have great reasoning for why you want this done, but to look at it like this and try to figure that out, at least for me sitting on the audience, I know you all are engineers and designers, so maybe it's easier for you. But if we had a, a very clear chart of the reasoning that you're proposing these changes, I think it might be helpful, A, for us in the peanut gallery, but B, so that we wouldn't have a finding of fact, conclusion of law, and anything that's decided, like was decided tonight, and I'm hoping that you'll reconsider about the RV parks, have actual factual findings behind them, other than it's in the comprehensive plan. Because as we've established, the comprehensive plan is five years old. The discussions that went into the comprehensive plan are six to seven years old. By Kentucky statute, the comprehensive plan has to be revised every five years. So all this is based on something that has to be revised this year. So, um, I, I, but I would love to see what the rationale is, and I think in the future, uh, it would save Fort Thomas from getting sued if we, you know, had some, um, defense against a decision being arbitrary and capricious.
So let's take a step back, um, and I don't know what the lawsuit you're referring to is. But no decisions are being made here tonight. These are recommendations, these are conversations. And so you do not need findings of fact or conclusions of law to have a conversation and a discussion. So there is nothing that's happened here tonight that may even date to start a lawsuit, is a conversation. KRS one hundred says that the, the comprehensive plan has to be looked at every five years. It does not say that it has to be revised.
So literally, it has to be reviewed every five years?
So it has to be.
Has that happened? This is the fifth year.
Um, I would have to say it has not happened at this point. But again, it does not have to be revised, it just has to be looked at and decided as to whether or not an update is needed. And if you look at the existing language, um, comp plan that is currently in the code, you'll see where sometimes that has happened in the past. So whether or not, you know, how the process is going to be due about this year or not, but the code does not require it to be revised or rewritten every five years.
But you agree that, that the plan is five years old and needs to be looked at again this year?
I will say it is five years old, and that KRS one hundred says that the planning commission, city council, needs to look at it and review it every five years.
So I think part of the pushback here, all feeling, and I know you guys are volunteers and you're doing this, and you've been doing it a lot, a lot of it for a long time, is that many people in Fort Thomas that I've encountered, including myself, didn't even know that process was happening. And it's communication problems or whatever it is, but in two thousand and nineteen, there was a recommendation made by CT consultants to, and I've got this right here, to, uh, city council that before this process went forward, that the land and, uh, land and zoning subcommittee of that two thousand and eighteen comprehensive plan be reconvened, which it wasn't. So I would hope that if I were all, if I had to make all these decisions, I'd sure want to know that I wasn't going to get a bunch of pushback because people said they didn't know about it or because the stuff didn't happen that was supposed to happen that was recommended by CT consultants themselves. So again, I'm asking you if you will just reconsider, because my understanding, Alicia, is that there was a decision made tonight to recommend to the planning commission that the new plank in this program would be that it would allow RV parks, you know, RV parks and camping facilities down there on the river. Is that correct?
No decision has been made, a discussion was had. The discussion was to leave it as a conditional use, and that we would look at it again as we move through the process. But no definitive decision has been made, partly because they don't even have the authority to make a decision.
I understand that, but they make the authority to make, they have the authority to make a recommendation. Tonight, I'm sorry, I'm confused. Tonight, did they make the decision to make the recommendation to city council to allow RV parks, or is that a decision they're going to be making in the future?
That is a decision they'll be making in the future, okay? No, what we, they are saying that for this time and place.
We said, we said, at this time and place, we, we, we have to go back through all of this before we make any recommendation to city council. Yeah, no, you, you said, did, did I say yes to, to camping in that? Yes, yes, I did. Anyway, that's not a decision, and we have not made a decision as a council.
You say yes to camping?
Or is it?
I'm confused. Do you guys think that, no, no, I'm not talking about camping, I'm talking about RV parks. Because I don't see RV parks as a comprehensive plan. Are you saying that tonight, that you would make the recommendation to council to include RV parks down there?
I think I would, yeah.
And where are the RV parks came from, is that one exists today?
Is that aqua ramp?
Yes, it does.
Yeah, aqua ramp, RV and RVs.
RV, oh, it has one. Yes.
Yeah.
So what's that zone that's right now?
RP, and so, because right now, in the RP zone, recreational uses are permitted. And someone at some point in time interpreted that an RV park was a recreational use and permitted. So yes, there's an RV park now, and that is where the discussion.
I did make the comment, you probably need a better definition of RV park, because everyone thinks of a tightly knit group of, of trailers all right next to each other. And, you know, we need to look at things like that, controlling the density so we don't pass them.
Right.
And I mean, I did make that comment because I wanted to see, you know, well, what part of the land came down there? So if we're going to allow that, I think we need, we need more, more control and research and that issue.
And, and if this moves forward, and no decision's been made, but if it moves forward, we will define what it is, and we will have to define certain conditions. Things such as can't be three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It can't have a certain amount of distance, it has a certain amount of density, it has to be X amount of distance between RV sites, those kinds of things.
Since, since there's already one there.
There is already one there.
Correct. So you just, it would be, what you're asking us is if we would allow more there, another part there, or another part there?
It's the use, what, whether or not the use is allowed.
Right, and another area, not just there. Because there's a use there, you can't tell them they have to move.
Correct, we're not allowed by law to tell them, they have to shut it down.
So there's a first one there. So really what you're saying is we need more conditions on it. Right, because there's already one there.
Correct.
But you also say that whether or not we would, we would allow more, is that right?
What I'm saying is if they would like to allow more, we need to have a discussion as to whether or not it goes in the used table and how it goes in the used table. Is it a conditional use? And if so, as Jerry's pointed out, how it's defined and what those conditions are. If we specifically leave it out of the revenue, out of the used table, then that use becomes non-conforming. Which, again, to Pat's point, we can't shut it down, ever.
I need again, thirty-five on the link. Um, just curiosity, where the aqua ramp area is now, you can get to that pretty easy. But is some of this going to be based on what they determined to do with Route Eight? Because in my mind, I'm seeing the Route Eight, the old Route, not the new Route, but the old Route Eight along the river. There has been talk about trying to improve that again, making it a bioreed. Is it down that direction that we're talking about having this landing area?
I think it's going to be based on the, the ideas that the improvements for passability is going to be in place. Um, we're, I have conversations with the state currently to make improvements. A lot of back and forth, a lot of, a lot of that. So I think the implication is that we have a passable road that it can be in that entire area.
But, so if I had a, a planting-type RV vehicle, I would be more potential in using that area if the road is viable. Right now, the road is just not, has not been that viable, that's why they rerouted it, Route Eight.
Right.
Correct, okay.
I just have a quick comment. Because I'm seated in the front row, I don't know who's seated behind me. So I don't, I don't know if any of you have been to the meeting that Alisa had a month ago, the morning after the, after this, the board meeting. I was there, it was very beneficial. It was interesting to me because a, a young man was there, whom I had not seen at other meetings. His first question he asked, and we're like, what? What are you, what are you talking about? Great questions, great answers, stuff that I was able then to look into it. So I encourage any of you, even though you were here tonight, which I was last month as well, I learned things the next morning, and there is something a little bit different in a five-person-in-the-room conversation rather than a community in the room in a conversation. So another point I wanted to mention is last month, no matter what we tried, there's going to be some feedback. I wish you would have done it this way. People said, I can't come in the day, please make it at night. People said, well, I don't like coming in the night, keep it in the day. You're offering day and night. I mean, what more can we ask? So I, I totally applaud you for that, and I do appreciate it. And I encourage anyone, because it is easier to go up with a question when you can ask it immediately, instead of waiting maybe, you know, fifteen, twenty minutes till there's a break. So it was much more informal, much more casual, but everything is informative. So I encourage anyone to go, for anybody who wants to hear.
Would it be the pleasure of the planning commission to go to the next section, or are we kind of done for the night? What do you all, what's your pleasure? The next section is, uh, neighborhood commercials, if you want to go down that route. Uh, I expect time.
How about I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
All those pay?